Is it important to hear or not?
It's not our thing.
Right, it's like in your life. I like love cheering him on, I think that's all. Like, can you see any chance?
There is a... I was gonna be the night, I'm on, I'm, I'm, I have kids so... Should be sure, guys, dinner. All these things. Let's see, it'd be nice for those...
So loud, isn't it?
A little more, we will find out.
No kids out?
I just count one of them. I just count one of these, it's like greatest water. All the times different. Time is now six o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, do we have anything we want to add or remove from the agenda today?
I do have a few things to add to the agenda this evening. Thanks everybody for coming out tonight. In order for our residents and commissioners to fully understand how the city believes that the standards are met per the July 21st meeting, particularly standards B and C related to the definition of community character, I asked the commission to join me in supporting a motion to add the standards conversation to today's agenda. This way, the city can provide substantive material to support the positions taken during the July 21st meeting. Madam President, I defer to you to take up the motion.
Is there a second to this motion?
I second.
Alright, would anybody like to add to the discussion? I can, I can say what, you probably know what I'm gonna say, Commissioner Hunter, my standard policy is always to avoid adding anything to the agenda of substance that isn't an emergency, and that's for a couple of reasons. Excuse me, ma'am. It's for a couple of reasons. One of them is that the public is not on notice. Like you said, it's an important discussion. It's one that we did have last week, it's one that we could have again in the future, if that's with everybody's appetite, but I personally had discussions with people where I said, "Don't worry, it's not on the agenda this week." It will be likely on the 18th, but there's nothing about the project on for the 4th, and I wouldn't want to disrespect them by then having a substantive discussion. The other reason is that we are down two commission members today, and it doesn't give them the opportunity to provide a comment that we could then read on their behalf on this topic. So for that reason, I'll be voting no, but would anybody else like to add to the discussion?
Let's add my two cents. See, I think I agree with Laura, I think it just, it just seems, I'm, I would love to talk about the conversation. I think that in light of though, the, the most recent email that we got from Shay, giving us more, more information about, you know, the handbook that he dug into, did some more research, I had not had a chance to dive into that. So, just out of timing, I prefer if we could just delay that conversation if possible.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Commissioner Schwartz and, and Chris here. To add to that too, it, from that same email, to expand a little bit on top of the standards that we got at four today, it was mentioned that Mr. Huff is doing some research to provide some additional information on that as well. I would expect to see that, I'm assuming in the next week or two before the...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Yes.
So, I, I would also be a no for now, because I would like to hear, hear what that research has to say, and, and then have it in a, in a time when we can announce it to the greater public, to make sure everyone's here that wants to be here.
Mr. Huff, can you clarify what additional research that is? Is that case, my understanding is that's case law to support a definition of character as we find it in our zoning ordinance, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there anything else that will be brought to the table related to, especially that standard, but potentially additional standards, in terms of additional research?
At this point, the request had been to, on the question of character and the definition, and I'd asked Mr. Huff to engage in that. If there is additional information, if commissioners feel free to reach out and say, you know, these are potential items I'd like to have some insider information on, we'll take a look at it and either move forward with it, or if we have questions with the commission, bring it back for the entire commission to have a conversation, so. But that's, I had asked Mr. Huff to focus on the character question.
Alright, so the motion was to add a discussion to tonight's agenda.
Could I ask another clarif- sorry, another clarifying question. When do we anticipate this item will return to the agenda?
At this point, we anticipate it will be back on the agenda on August 18th.
Go ahead, a few more to discuss?
No, no more comments.
Okay.
Yep.
So then, we'll formally call it to a vote, all those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
No? The motion does not pass, and there will be no addition of that item to the agenda. Is there anything else that you or anybody else would like to add or remove from tonight's agenda?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple more things in the spirit of transparency and for efficiency of meetings that I'd like to also discuss this evening. The first one would be asking commission to, to join me this evening in, in supporting a motion to move public comment to the beginning of an agenda item, where it appears there's nominal number, 10 or more residents in attendance for that particular agenda item. I don't know if there's anything in Open Meetings Act or MML that supports the movement of those comments, but in order to fully voice those comments for, for those agenda items, I believe they should be at the beginning of the conversation and not at the end.
So, are you making a motion to add such a discussion today, or is this a, like a more of your, is this more of like a, in your personal report?
Um, no, it would be a motion this evening to change the structure of subsequent meetings to include that public opinion, public comment at the beginning of those agenda items instead of for after.
Okay, is there a second to this motion?
Second.
So, again, I would, I don't, this is a substantive item that I think we all need to be more prepared for. I am in favor of discussing it in the future, but I would like to come prepared and have research from staff on best practices, legality, and also have some awareness from the commissioners who are not in attendance today.
I don't oppose the idea, I think it's interesting, you know, I think that a lot of people were talking about wanting to be able to get their voice heard, and some, some of these conversations that we've had are a bit long-winded. There's a lot of information that's, you know, we have to digest and, and go through like last week's commission meeting, I think was like one of the longest ever. So I can see, I know that there's a sense of frustration from the public and when they want to be able to voice their opinion, but I've noticed though, so, and this is where I think that I, maybe you want to pause to see what staff has to say, because like, I've noticed when we've had meetings in past, people might come out maybe with some misinformation, or I'm not quite sure, and before they speak, if they get to hear, you know, some more details and learn a little bit more about whatever the topic is that we're about, we're talking about, sometimes they answer the question for them, and then they, it might change maybe how they comment or what they say. Many times I've seen that where people come up and say, "Hey, you kind of answered my question, I came here to say this, but it sounds like you're on the right track, thank you." So, I thought, my understanding of being on the commission for four years, that it's been set up in that, designed that way, to be able to allow for those who show up to have, give public comment to people speak and articulate intelligently on, on, about the topic, once they get all the detailed information that they could, they could get sometimes missed, that might be missed online or something, so. But again, I think, I don't mind the conversation, I just think maybe it's just too soon, it's just kind of threw it up here, but I think if we can get some staff to input on this and maybe discuss this next, at the next meeting, that's a good idea.
I'd like to offer that I certainly support a conversation about where we put public comment within various items on our agenda. I would really like to see this be an even broader conversation about how we set an agenda and decide on what items we're going to be discussing at any given meeting. In my one and a half years going on too now, I've asked the question many, many times, how does an item get on the agenda, and there's no clear policy for that. You know, there are examples that we can look to for other municipalities where there are clear policies about how things get on an agenda, there's different methods and ways of doing it, and I would really like to see us have a full conversation about the options, so that, you know, when, when residents ask us, "Hey, how do we, how do you get something on the agenda," or how did, "Why is this on the agenda?" We have full knowledge of what goes on the agenda for our meeting and when.
Any further discussion?
I mean, I'm gonna echo Commissioner Wesley again here, I am definitely up for this conversation, I think it's a good conversation to have, but I want to do it armed with a little bit more information about what municipalities in the area do, what best practices are, because I, I was just like, like quickly, hectically Googling here, like, when is the right time to put public comment? And I'd rather have more time to kind of get that, get, get some recommendations from staff on that, and then have a, a little bit more tangible discussion about it, but good idea.
So can we, can we set a date, maybe make an amended motion to set a date to have this conversation at a future meeting?
Do we have to pick a date? Are you suggesting a specific date?
I think in order for us to like, make sure that we have this discussion, I think it would behoove us to do that tonight.
So procedurally, right now you have a motion on, on the floor to amend the agenda to have this conversation.
Right, so we'd have to amend the motion.
So then, Commissioner, you're requesting a friendly amendment of Commissioner Hunter to amend this to add to a future meeting?
Right, so looking at our meeting calendar, I guess the amended motion would be moved to discuss a policy for setting city commission meeting agendas on September, at our meeting on September 2nd.
It's Labor Day?
It's the day after Labor Day.
So I, I would, do we have to, sorry, policy-wise here, so we have a discussion?
So, so...
Did you amend his motion?
Yes.
So you're, so you're, so did you? So, Commissioner Hunter, would you accept that as a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yeah, yep.
That's right, and obviously, so you have a motion and a second, so the floor, the motion on the floor is to add to the September 2nd agenda a full conversation regards to public comment as well as setting agenda items to be discussed at the September 2nd meeting.
Is this in the scope of the approval of the agenda items?
No, but with that said...
Is there a specific defined scope for this?
Generally, we, it's not, it's not the intention of this part of the agenda, this would have been something that would have been more appropriate under Commissioner Comments for something to consider. With that said, if the commission would like to consider it?
I think in the spirit of efficiency, let's just talk about it now, so that we don't have to redo this in comment. So we are now discussing the amendment...
So we're, we're discussing a motion to add to the September 2nd meeting?
Correct.
A, a future discussion on public comment and agenda setting, is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, is there any discussion on this from down there? I'm, I'm personally hesitant to pick the second, because I don't know what else is in the pipeline, but if we could, as long as it is put further down the agenda than any Gaslight Investors discussion, I feel like it would be a lengthy discussion and one that not everybody wants to listen to, if Gaslight Investors is on the agenda. So, I, I would be in favor of adding it to a near future meeting, I just, I worry about locking us into a specific date if there's other pressing matters then, that require more time.
I also worry about letting it slide as it, as it has.
Totally, totally.
So, the amendment to my motion is, is a, is a powerful one, as, as I think about the way that they tie in together, in terms of some of the residents that I've spoken to, that from the July 21st meeting, you know, left without the ability to comment, and then in, in conjunction with that amendment, it's a, it's a timely one to, I think, have, have the conversation on. So, if, if we could do it on, you know, September 2nd, if we could agree to that, I, I think that's the motion that I'd like to make.
Alright, that's the motion, is there any further discussion?
Who, I, I guess this is hard for me, because we don't have the mayor here to commit to this.
Well, I think that's the role of Madam President, as you, as you elected last meeting, right, is to, is to carry on the city's business when she's not here.
Okay.
Commissioner Hunter, maybe, could it be possible to have wiggle room to say, within the next two sessions, ideally on the 2nd, if it's overwhelmed with stuff, definitely on, on the following? That way, we can get staff to be able to...
So honor before September 15?
15, 16, yeah, 15.
Would that work? That would give us some more wiggle room, and then we can get, carve out time to do that.
I, I think that sounds very agreeable.
Could somebody please amend their motion?
Amend the motion? To have a, to hold a conversation on the city commission agenda about setting city commission agendas, including the placement of public comment on or before September 15th, 2025.
Do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Right, as if there's no further discussion, we'll bring this to a vote, all those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed?
No.
Okay. That was fun, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I have one final motion to bring to the agenda tonight, and that is to ask the commission to support me in compelling the role of consultant for the city of East Grand Rapids. Somebody's gonna be, for instance, working for the city in that role for a, again, nominal period of days, be it 15 or 30, whatever defines sort of a long-term relationship with the city, to be compelled to be using a East Grand Rapids email address with our East Grand Rapids domain, just for transparency for the residents and taxpayers of East Grand Could we add that to the agenda to discuss this evening?
Is there...
Sorry, can you...
What's the motion? Would you like to clarify the motion?
I'm, I'm motioning to discuss any consultant working for the city for longer than 30 days, we could discuss what an appropriate amount of time is for that number of days, to be using an East Grand Rapids email address, rather than a individual or corporate email address that does not belong to the egrmi.gov email domain.
Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
I'll open the floor for discussion by reiterating my past positions on adding things to tonight's agenda, that's, I think there's a lot to unpack there, and I'd like to know more about the background of why you're asking it, and what, you know, what the purpose is, what staff thinks. I think all of that can be accomplished without trying to add it to tonight's agenda, so that we can reach a better decision. Any further discussion?
I agree, I think, well, ideally, I don't really understand the context around it, so I'm not opposed to the, the conversation, but ideally, I think it'd be great if it was just sent to the staff to say, "Hey, can we get this on the agenda," and then also, if we had a bit more heads up, or like more information about like maybe who, a specific email, because I'm trying to think about who it is that's potentially, I think the idea is that you're thinking that maybe someone's abusing that, the time limit or something, and so I'm trying to understand, like, what would that situation be?
Well, I think...
Hold on, hold on, we're not discussing the substance of it, it's whether to put it on tonight's agenda.
So I, I think it'd be better if it was just passed on to the staff, that we can have more time to digest and understand, I don't have enough context to make a decision whether we want to talk about it or not, sorry.
Any further discussion?
Well, so I, I think maybe what I'm hearing Commissioner Hunter say is that potentially looking for, again, a policy that would govern email addresses and/or transparency around those who are not full-time employees, but contractors with the city, right?
Correct.
So maybe, so the context is not just a discussion, but a policy, and maybe that could inform, like we did with the previous, your previous motion, adding a discussion to a future agenda.
I can, the motion is what it is, if you'd like to amend it, that's fine. As a policy though, like, generally, we add things to the agenda by having these discussions, not at this point of approving for the agenda, this is an interesting approach.
There have been other examples of this by commission in the past year, of not having a full conversation, so with having missed last meeting, the July 21st meeting, and some things that came out of that meeting, resident conversations, this was the best opportunity to bring it up.
I disagree, but alright, let's bring this to a vote. All those in favor of adding this to tonight's agenda, please say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
No? Is there anything else that anyone would like to add or take off of tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we shall move on to Public Safety Chief Buukama will be presenting an award. Chief, please come on up, thank you.
Public comment, not protest?
Uh, no, it's, it's a different order tonight.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good evening, commissioners and members, members of the community, it's an honor to stand here before you all tonight, to highlight just a portion of the great work of what the public safety team does on a regular basis. Tonight, I would like to highlight the efforts of Detective Sergeant Dan LaBazoo. Dan, would you please come up? In early May of this year, two home invasions were reported in the southeastern portion of the city. Detective Sergeant LaBazoo was assigned both cases and spent countless hours gathering evidence from cameras, neighborhood canvases, checking pawn shops, reviewing similar crime patterns, and looking at Facebook Marketplace for the stolen property. Detective Sergeant LaBazoo quickly identified a suspect through his investigation, and determined it was the same suspect that we had arrested in May of 2024 for conducting home invasions in the same area. That suspect was already found guilty, but was free awaiting sentencing. Through his investigation, Detective Sergeant LaBazoo located the stolen property on social media and created a conversation posing as an interested buyer. A meetup spot was determined, and Detective Sergeant LaBazoo and other officers met the buyer, who was detained for questioning after producing the stolen goods. The subject admitted to buying the stolen goods and gave a description of the person, of the person he purchased them from the day before. That description matched the same person that was arrested the previous year. The results of the neighborhood canvas also showed the suspect's vehicle was parked just to the south of the home where the home invasions had occurred. Based on the evidence and high risk of the suspect entering occupied homes, potentially creating a violent encounter, Detective Sergeant LaBazoo drafted a search warrant, and on Saturday, May 24, around 4:00 a.m., Detective Sergeant LaBazoo observed the suspect's vehicle traveling around the area of East Grand Rapids. He alerted road patrol units of the situation, and the suspect vehicle was located on Plymouth. Since the suspect had outstanding, several outstanding warrants, a traffic stop was attempted, and the suspect fled. Public safety officers did not pursue the suspect, per our policy, and advised GRPD of the suspect's vehicle and direction of travel. GRPD located the vehicle a short time later, and it was abandoned, but they did capture the suspect who was fleeing the vehicle. The suspect has since been sentenced for the 2024 home invasions, and the prosecutor's office have reviewed the two recent cases to add to the existing charges. Detective Sergeant LaBazoo is to be commended for his tireless efforts in this case. He worked efficiently, diligently, and built a strong case to get the suspect in custody. The suspect had demonstrated willingness to enter occupied homes, engage with residents, and become violent with anyone who may confront him. Detective Sergeant LaBazoo, in his short time in investigative decision, investigative division, has shown great professionalism, communication, networking, and brought a violent offender to justice. The city of East Grand Rapids is a safer place today due to the strong work and commitment by the East Grand Rapids Department of Public Safety, and specifically Detective Sergeant Dan LaBazoo in this case. Dan, it is my honor tonight to present you with a meritorious service of work.
Okay, so next on tonight's agenda is public comment. So if you wish to speak on an agenda item that is not on the regular agenda items, so that would be anything related to Gaslight Investors project, now is your opportunity. So when you, please, when you come up, please state your name and address. As a reminder, the rules are, this is a comment time, not a time for questions, if you do have questions, you can leave them with staff, and you'll speak directly to the commission, not to staff. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less, there'll be a buzzer to let you know when your three minutes are up. Please respect the time of others by ending at three minutes, and of course, respect each other with no booing or clapping, so that everyone feels safe to make the comments they'd like to make. Alright, with that, we'll get started.
My name is Anna Moore Butzner, and I live at 2311 Wealthy Street Southeast, which is the Lakeshore Club condominiums. I have lived there for 18 years, serving on the board in a leadership role for all 18 years. Good evening, I come before you to once again voice my opinion about the Gaslight Investors PUD concept plan. I have seen numerous businesses come and go, prime real estate along Wealthy Street in our village. Is it the rent? Is it Amazon shopping? Who knows? Maybe the Gaslight Business Association can shed some light on this. The concept of adding more retail while existing buildings remain empty seems counterintuitive. I hope you all have had an opportunity to read the recent Bridge article about the PUD concept plan. It explains very well the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority law, which was passed in 2023 by the state legislature. It says, quote, "The Brownfield Authority, known as the Housing Incentive Law, aims to spur housing for middle-income earners. It is essentially a rebate, allowing developers to capture the difference between the original taxable value and the increased value of developed land." The article goes on to explain how developers negotiate with local governments, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, to set the terms of a tax incentive, that is, how much and for how long. In the meantime, the city commission, last winter, created the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and to date, has not appointed an independent panel to negotiate with the developer. Why? At this juncture, it seems like the city commission should be doing the negotiations, and should be listening to the residents and voters. For the past year, there has been opposition to this concept plan. Many people have voiced their opinion with regard to density, traffic, height, parking, and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Commissioners, you have the power, not the developer. It is you who should be driving the discussion. You are elected representatives of the people, and you are ultimately responsible for this once-in-a-lifetime decision on the future of East Grand Rapids. I implore you to please listen to the voters. We want a viable village, which certainly includes new development, but not of this magnitude. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Susie Fiore, live at 6002 Lovett. I'm not here to either say yay or nay for the development, I think it's something that could be great. What I would like to recommend is that somehow or another, the developer would put together a three-dimensional map, if not a map, but a, just a three-dimensional design, so people with angst could see what it looks like. It's really hard right now, because it's changed so many times what it would look like, height of building, blah, blah, blah. If there's a way that we could put together a diagram, a three-dimensional diagram, and maybe stick it right out here in front of the library, or something like that, so people that have angst about what it could look like, could see what it, what it looks like. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's...
Hi, my name is Erica Dutton. I live at 2100 Gorham Drive Southeast. A few comments. That was an interesting introduction. We appreciate it. Second, safety. I know I can't address you directly as instructed. We thank you. One of the number one reasons why we came back to East Grand Rapids was the two-minute response time, is people's awareness, their attentiveness, their desire to keep all our children safe, all the homes safe. We're very grateful. Thank you. One of the biggest things that's really just striking, we spent, I was at the last meeting, I was also at this February 17 meeting. I believe that's the correct date. Both meetings, both myself and my husband desperately wanted to give back to our community, to offer our voices, were not able to because we had a child to put to bed. And we mean that with all due respect and all the hard work that people are putting in, but you too have children, you too need to go home, you too need to go to bed. These four-and-a-half-hour meetings are very difficult. The introductions could be shortened and respectful. Perhaps adjusting the agenda would be very helpful, and I think that is what Commissioner Hunter was referring to. Many of us have a lot of things on our mind, a lot of concerns. I think having any forum that would allow for discussionary basis would be very beneficial. It would add value, it would answer questions that are ongoing in the community. It's not a detriment to anybody, it's not hurtful, it's not harmful, it adds value. It spreads information that helps all of us make better decisions. We do work hard to live here. I do believe that with privilege comes a responsibility. I genuinely believe that. I was given the great privilege of growing up here. We chose, my husband and I, who both grew up here, to move back here for our daughter. I think we have a duty as residents, as representatives, to uphold that, to maintain it, to offer that opportunity for residents to both speak to and with our representatives in a dialogue forum. When questions are asked, it's helpful to have an answer. It's not meant to be critical, it's meant to be giving an answer, giving information. And finally, trust. It's essential, it is essential to our character. It is essential to who we represent as representatives, as individuals, residents, and so on. With 21 seconds to go, I have one final comment. There is an ordinance that requires all residents to maintain their properties. We as residents pay a lot of money to live here. We are grateful for that, with that privilege, of the schools and everything else, as does the developer. So there is a ordinance, it's section 84, chapter 84, section 8.93. Please respect it, please uphold the developer to this. I apologize for going over, but this is important.
Thank you.
Please do respect it.
Good evening, everyone. City Commissioners, hello again. I'm Wendy Scott, and I'm at 435 Lake Side Drive Southeast. I'm in Ward 1. And I am five houses down from this, you know, proposed PUD. And I can see from my front door, looking up the hill at the higher elevation, that, that site. So first, I want to say I do support responsible, purpose-driven development that enhances the community's life and prioritizes safety and sustainability. But I have to ask, how can such a consequential decision be made without a comprehensive understanding of its long-term impact on our community's character, our infrastructure, and the public safety? The concept plan as it stands lacks the foundational analysis and independent studies needed to support an informed decision. Critical areas of due diligence remain unaddressed, and without them, any vote risks being premature, negligent, and potentially detrimental. Where's the water runoff impact assessment? We are at a high water table. We are looking at a project that sits at a higher elevation surrounding the residents with a plan that plops a giant concrete asphalt slab with minimal green space. Where's the plan? Because the residents, they live downstream. East is defined by its green spaces, John Collins Park, Waterfront Park, the north area of the wooded area there. The plan does not meet the character of the surrounding community. Where's the traffic study? Despite promises that were made in 2025, January of this year, that they were underway. It's August. There's nothing been produced that's significant, and that's unacceptable. The city has a duty to ensure road safety and mobility. Promises to look at it later do not meet the requested standard to even consider a vote. It's astonishing today with a project of this magnitude that we don't have a traffic study and solutions in front of us. There is either zero transparency, or there is no plan. It's embarrassing. As an elected, the obligation is to serve the residents, not the consultant, and not the developers. Let's not lose sight of that. Today's best move to serve the community, in my opinion, is to slow down this process and take time to gather the proper facts and the findings on the impact assessments, and probably most importantly, to regain the community's trust, because it's been lost.
Thank you, everyone, for respecting the rules. Is anyone up next?
Good evening. Nancy Patterson, 2104 Gorham Drive Southeast, East Grand Rapids. I'd like to piggyback on what we just heard. If you look at the City of East Grand Rapids Master Plan of 2018, and by the way, I understand there's supposed to be a 2024 plan, and I couldn't find a link to that on the website, so I'm wondering where that is. But the master plan from 2018 to create a community atmosphere that reinforces the residential character and high standards of excellence that have come to symbolize East Grand Rapids. In that master plan, it was noted we are experiencing an increase in precipitation and summer temperatures. Let me jump to Reed's Lake, my focus today. If you're contemplating building a concrete jungle in that current acreage that's open, I really am curious how the current situation in place to filter debris out of water coming off of East Grand Rapids into the lake could be effective for that. The water reports for Reed's Lake, December 2023, phosphorus-enriched waters put the lake in the caution category. There was a moderate concentration of salts, and that is not optimal. The bottom water was determined to be deoxygenated. There is no dissolved oxygen in the bottom of Reed's Lake. At the surface, there was minimum dissolved oxygen, nearly low enough to affect sensitive fish. Remediation recommendations were made. The Reed's Lake Water Report for December 24, virtually word-for-word, exactly the same. Question, if there was remediation, it didn't work. If there was no remediation, I would find it highly offensive to have the December of 2025 water quality exactly the same. And how is the water quality going to be assessed beyond what's already in the report? How about wildlife? How about fish? The increase in the surface water temperatures are going to possibly create an unexpected fish boil. I'd like to put a focus on this most amazing resource we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Patterson.
Charles Caldwell, 2037, Lake Point Drive. Honorable, no, I guess it's Acting Madam President, and Honorable Commissioners, Staff, and Honorable Attorney. Greetings. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Let me state that I have no malice for any party in these, either side of this equation. In fact, parties of the proposed project are acquaintances and even friends of mine. But I do have a couple items I'd like to bring to your attention. The current buildings, which are now 20 years old almost, still have vacancies. They have high turnover rates. In my opinion, this is due to high rents and aggressive and unfavorable leases. I know this because I have been one of their tenants, and I have dealt with their leases, and they are very challenging. Let's be honest, these people are here to make money. You make money by maximizing the use of the property, which is their job. Okay? They want to stack the buildings and use all the spot and eliminate anything which is non-producing property. Non-producing property would be green spaces and parking. Now, I've been here for over 40 years, and I've never heard anyone say, "East Grand Rapids has too much parking." And, and as you continue to add more spaces, it won't really matter how many traffic studies and how many roof per spots and cars per lot and all that stuff that you go through, which I know is appropriate, and I appreciate what the staff has done in the past. There's no one that's going to look at a map of East Grand Rapids with the current plan and say, "We have too much parking." And let us remind you that when they had the other lot, which was there taken from the Jacobson's Company, it was free for a while until it was inappropriate to be free. And then they charged for it. And only those individuals who currently had leases were maybe given active passes for some of their clients. So I also know that you're in quite a bind. I understand you've assumed a 20-year-old lease with no expiring PUD. You're pretty much shackled. I don't know how you're going to dance around this and make everybody happy, but you've got a job ahead of you. And it's not going to be easy, because if you don't do it right, they will sue you. They are smart, they're well-financed, and you will lose. So I'm only encouraging you to listen to your citizenry, act accordingly, be cautious, and make sure that you do your due diligence before you do anything, because it will come back to bite you. Lastly, just as a old movie called, great, well, I can't even remember the name of it, but it was Jimmy Stewart, it was called "Potterville." What sense does it make to have your entire city be owned by one developer? Perhaps they should be allowed to give their PUD if they disown or send some of their property to another owner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Nice to see the Commissioners and city staff. My name is Scott Damon. My address is 625 Bridge Street, which is a Grand Rapids address. I'm a partner of Wendy Scott's at 435. Thank you, Commissioner Hunter, for introducing the first motion today. It's a super important motion. I wanted to make a first comment about the Manhattan Park enhancements. A wonderful enhancement of the park. It's fantastic. In fact, over the weekend, we rode the whole perimeter of the new sidewalks, hung out at the Splash Park, rode all the mountain bike trails, and came back around Reed's Lake. It was just a fantastic enhancement, well done. Related to the PUD, as kind of an outsider looking at this, I look at what goes on inside the boundary and what goes on outside the boundary. And from the perspective that you hear from Wendy's words that I agree with, it's what goes on outside the boundary that is a huge concern. I feel that what goes on inside the boundary, the developer is going to control what they can control aside from aesthetics, because they need to have a functional, well-run oil machine. And so I would almost empower the developer to take care of what makes that space work well. The latter is the big question that I don't think has been addressed at all to this point. And probably one of the biggest parts with that is the mobility and safety, what I consider efficiency of movement. There's a convenience factor of how people want to move around the city, and that is part of the character of the city. So with all that being said, this is not certainly opposed, because that's prime property that something good has to be done with, but the city isn't ready today. The developer isn't ready today. When I watched the video from the last meeting, I, one of the city officials was talking about the developer could still owe some information that could help make better decisions. So this just comes down to details, and that's okay. It's okay to tap the brakes. This is a monumental decision. But the potential passage of a pending ordinance amendment on the concept plan, if it passes, that is a huge win for the developer. We can have threats of lawsuits, but that is a huge win for the developer, and that's the spot that puts you guys in an extra bind. With the obvious and open issues, residents' concerns, which is an amazing turnout from the residents, I wish we'd had more of that on the rezone of the antique shop. This vote is not ready for the commission to make a decision on. And I'd like to close by saying is, from the earlier comments, I wanted to thank Commissioner Schwartz, Wesley, and Burdick for understanding that complex issues need more city input and more time to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else today? Hello, Mr. Anderson.
Hello, yeah, me again. I'm Jerry Anderson, 435 Edgmere Drive Southeast. My comments today are in reference to the so-called standards of approval that were discussed last week in which our mayor, Commissioner Burdick, Commissioner Wesley, and Commissioner Schwartz all voted to approve without question or without qualification. Standard D says, "The PUD shall not change the essential character of the surrounding area." Here's "character." And I understand why our commissioners might be confused. The city's paid consultant, Mr. LeBlanc, offered this in the packet last week in defense of the city's insistence that this standard is met. This is a quote, "By way of example, a change in character on this site would be an industrial park, a car dealership, or an outdoor storage yard." I understand your confusion. Mr. LeBlanc has mistaken the definition of zoning for the definition of "character." Contrast that, please, with the statement, the following statement provided by the Michigan Land Use Institute. The institute reviewed two cases in the Michigan Court of Appeals where a local community opposed a development. The following is a quote, "In both these cases, the Court of Appeals ruled that just because a development meets the stripped size or lot number requirements of the ordinance, it does not mean the development is harmonious with the character of the surrounding area." The ruling in the first case states, this is a quote from the ruling, "Harmony means more than mere technical compliance with zoning requirements." The second ruling states more strongly, "Harmony must necessarily mean more than just technical compliance. Otherwise, the ordinance would be meaningless." Essential character is a difficult thing to define. However, every one of us can stand in a neighborhood, look around, and comment on its character. It includes such things as architectural style and scale of buildings, but also the degree to which nature is integrated, the size of the roads, whether or not it's pedestrian-friendly, the amount of noise, and perhaps most of all, the degree in way in which people interact with each other. The term "gaslight village" should help define its own character, a quaint village area with traditional values. The introduction to the current East Grand Rapids Master Plan states, again, "The plan largely focuses on sustaining and enhancing the prized character of the community. It's important to us in East Grand Rapids." It goes on to say, "To create a community atmosphere that reinforces the residential character and the high standards of excellence that have come to be the symbols of East Grand Rapids, it's clear this goal remains the foundational principle guiding East Grand Rapids."
Thank you.
Please take that into account before you vote on character again. Thanks.
Thank you. I just realized that, sorry. Anyone else?
I come with no notes. I am, I'm going to talk a little bit about just how I fit into all this. My name is Theodora Wallshots. I've lived for 28 years at I've lived for 28 years at 427 Lakeside Drive Southeast. And I bought my house for the character of the community and what I was told at the time when I first moved in. Our, so our family business has rented on wealthy above-the-Rite Aid for 28 years. We've kept a business there, also, our family. So I live in 427. I live between the two lakes. And I am terrified that you will not listen to us in keeping the integrity of what we have right now. I am terrified that where people walk all the time, you're going to make, you're going to take away our trees, you're going to take away what we have in this city for building. And I want to say, as a person who's been there for a really long time and hopes my property values go up and not down, I am already worried, because now I have to live five doors down from a commercial property. That scares me very, very much in my property values. I want to sell my house, and I want it to go up as I get older. I'm putting a quarter of a million dollars into my house in the next 10 years. And I want to be able to, you know, make that a great house. But I don't want to not be able to sell it, because all of a sudden, my property values are not worth it anymore. That scares me. I also want to talk a little bit about trust in this city and how we feel about when we get together as neighbors and we talk about, and I want to put out a comment that is a very scary thing that we talk about and when we hear about done deal. That done deal gives us no hope. It gives us no trust. And we hear that people are for these builders, and they're not going to even listen to us. And I'm not sure if that's true or not. It's a feeling that I have, and it's valid, and it's why I'm here talking about it. We sometimes don't feel like we have a say because of the people with the money. And, and we are personalized. These are our homes. This is, this is what I bought my house for, is to look out at this nature. They cut, they, I want to tell you a little bit what happened before. They cut a hole into our neighborhood through the forest, and thank God it's grown over, because at that time, they were going to put some road in, and they were going to do this, and it was, it was not a very good idea to do. But people started coming through. I would see kids doing things in, in the forest. They had access to it now. Once I, I looked and I saw a man just standing in there, and I don't want the access from the lakes and from other things coming into our neighborhood. So please leave our trees. Please, if you can talk to the builders, please don't make our, our roads four lanes where we have a very nice and beautiful neighborhood.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Betsy Anderson, 435 Edgemere. I did not prepare any notes, but I have already heard some things that tie into what Commissioner Hunter was proposing you guys talk about, setting the agenda. I know for a fact that there are many, many, many people concerned about what you're looking at right now and that you haven't gone back to the developer and, and added some of what we would like to see happening. And all of those people are watching your agendas, and they check it before it comes out. When they see, oh, the PUD is not on this agenda, what they think is, oh, I'm not going to go to that meeting, because I want to talk the night that the PUD is on the agenda. Little do they know that if they come tonight, they could have talked about the PUD, because it's not on the agenda. Last week, we packed the room with over 60 people, for sure. I know that over 100 people right now are thinking about, when do I want to go to the commission meeting, because I'm very concerned. All of this information about who does set the agenda, are commissioners part of that? Is it the mayor? You know, who is it that's setting it? What's your policy? But for one thing, whatever you're doing, you are shutting people out in a way that you don't realize and that you really need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I take the last minute?
Hi, my name is Judith Baxter. I know you're well-known to me. I live on Hall Street near East Grand Rapids. Chief, city staff, ladies and gentlemen who came to this meeting and to the meetings prior. I don't have much to add to the people who spoke here tonight. They've spoke very emotionally, very profoundly, but one of the things I want to reiterate to your attention is, approving the concept plan may not be the final plan, and I'm directing this to you, Commissioner Wesley, but it is not just the beginning. Approving the concept plan locks in these plans that don't, that aren't going to be changed, height, number of buildings, and things of that nature. It's not that simple just to approve it and think you can change it later. It doesn't work that way. The process doesn't work that way. I encourage you to relook at that before you shake your head no, because the concept plan makes certain locks in to this plan, and the community opposes it. I'd like to thank, and second, Commissioner Hunter's request for discussions on character. I'd only add to that motion when that's coming up, that there be some citizen representatives on that discussion for character. I think it's very important for citizen input on the discussions of character be included in that discussion. I don't think character is hard to determine. I think all you have to do is ask yourselves, why did I come here? Why did I move here? Why do I live here? What do I like about this community? And none of that answers for a great big development in the middle of Gaslight, because it's never been there. So if you ask yourselves, why am I here? What do I like about this community? What do I love about this community? It isn't a massive development in the middle of town. And the choice here isn't to change East Grand Rapids, it's to enhance what you love about it, what brought you here, why you stay here. It's not to change it. So please give that some consideration in your future meetings. Thank you very much.
Can I have the transparency device turned on?
I think it is right now, if you set it on the place document. Oh, sorry. We can see it here. That's why it was confusing.
Can we turn it on so other people? Thank you.
Can you realize that we're separate?
I'll wait for it. Super. So my name is David Decker, 925 Belclaire. And first, I've got to say, three and a half hour meetings got to be tough for you guys, too. Thanks for hanging in there last week. Not on the same page, but we can be firm, fair, and friendly. This is a quote that Katie gave to MLive in 2019, and I think that's where you guys want to be, and that's where we want to be. Unfortunately, now I'm going to read another quote from MLive from two weeks ago. "A lengthy review of the contentious Gaslight Village redevelopment proposal left a bad taste in residents' mouths Monday night. When the city commission finally opened the floor to the public around 10:00 PM, those few residents who remained were furious. The meeting started at 6:00 PM. Residents weren't the only people in the world, in the room distrustful of the project. Commissioner Kate Skaggs earlier in the meeting said she felt the concept plan did not fit with the city's master plan in terms of walkability, describing the maze of parking lots in the plan as a detriment to health and safety. That doesn't look like transparent collaborative relationship between city and residents." The July 21 city commission agenda on page three stated, "The city commission will then review the standards of approval and complete the standards of review worksheet. During that meeting, each of the commissioners and the mayor were writing, discussing, and reviewing the worksheets. I filed a Freedom of Information Form with the city requesting a copy of the worksheets completed by our elected officials. It was denied. I have appealed the denial to the mayor and have not received a response from her. This seems like a simple request. We watched and listened as the commissioners completed the forms. Where are they? Where's the transparency and the collaboration? Residents are being pushed away from the process. Who is Gaslight Investors? Is it one person? Is it several people? Do we know? Do I need to file a Freedom of Information Act request to find out? Who from the city is talking to Gaslight Investors? Are they meeting in conference rooms with agendas and meeting minutes, or emailing or texting? Are they using personal emails and texts or city emails? City emails would be accessible to Freedom of Information requests. The residents of East Grand Rapids deserve to know and deserve a more transparent, collaborative relationship between the city. It's disheartening that we have to even talk about Freedom of Information requests. We can do better, and I'm hopeful that it starts today."
Thank you, Mr. Decker.
"Can you, the city commissioners, give us answers to these questions? And I'll submit them here."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? I'm sorry, Mr. Deems is approaching now. Oh, thank you.
Stuart Citrin's my name. I live 2615 Oakwood Southeast. I guess I've lived here about 45 years. I'm enjoying this meeting, as I have the others. I was here a couple of weeks ago, as well as a week ago, and I notice as I look at all of your faces, that you've all looked very carefully at the people who have spoken up here, with one exception. I've noticed that Mr. Charles hasn't looked at one speaker either last week or this week. He seems to be totally disinterested, and I wonder why you're not looking at anybody up here. It's not a very cordial way to engage with the citizenry, is it, Mr. Charles? That's about all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Hello. I'm Nile Deems, 701 Laurel. I'm not sure, I didn't want to brag about this. It sounds like I'm the old fart here. Everybody else, I think I've been here now for 49 years. And I haven't been back to a city commission meeting until January, when I heard about this, and that was six months after y'all started and on it. And I thought, this just doesn't seem right. But to get to just a couple points, Mr. Caldwell said, oh, he knows these guys, he had to deal with them as a tenant. So he pointed out, well, they can be tough. Well, yeah, that's the real point, as the citizens are sitting here saying, don't trust this. Yeah, they can be tough, but every time you give some approval, you are enshrining them more in a position to insist that you do what they want. And if you don't believe that, you're fooling yourself with the meaning of concept and what it can be turned into legally. Now, you also don't seem to want to press the developer to do things. And I've heard the mayor and some of the staff say, oh, well, he needs more, he needs to know more that he has a concept planned and these things, or he can't really come up with the numbers. He's back for the fourth time. He's in his third decade of screwing around with this project, and he tells you he doesn't know enough? I think you ought to doubt whether you want to approve him for anything. How could he be that ignorant? Now, the, uh, that there's a number of things that happened and have happened that also go to the trust issue. Frankly, it seems like your staff is feeding you a lot of information to say, approve it, approve it, approve it. You know, this is okay, this almost meets the standards, this is there, you don't have to worry about that. They haven't once said, you can disapprove it for this. Not once. It seems like the city manager and the zoning administrator and your planner just have a list of how do we interpret things to push it through. Last, last meeting, we heard about what this site was in the 1890s, and then we heard about it was a department store 25 years ago, and that said, oh, now see what the character is? It's okay. Really? We forgot the Native Americans. Now, I'm sorry, but character has nothing to do with what was here 25 years ago. That's just classic developer talk to dream up something that fits the category. Don't fall for it. Same thing happened with regard to the height of buildings. He gave us a chart, and what is it that he compared this project to? Oh, a hospital and a couple schools, public institutions that serve the public, not a single commercial or residential property, all of which, all in the city, are two or three stories. I think you better look much more into these things if you want to be sure you have trust of your decision in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deems. Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight? Going once, going twice?
I'd like to.
I think you already spoke, ma'am.
Can she have nine minutes? Ma'am, please, just one minute. Please?
I think you already spoke.
Actually, um...
Right, or could she have her minute?
No, actually, our, actually, our policy is, does speak does not allow for the trading of minutes. It's each individual is allocated three minutes.
All right. Thank you so much. So with, with that, if there's nobody else here to speak for a public comment, we will move on to the report of mayor and city commissioners, including committee liaison reports, and we'll start down here in Ward Three.
I do not have anything this evening.
All right. Mr. Hunter?
Nothing from Ward Two.
Okay. Commissioner Burdick?
I just want to thank city staff for the new turf in the dog park. Way to go. It looks great.
Commissioner Wesley?
Nothing right now.
Okay. It's a little distracting here. So I, I was hoping to address more people if they stayed, but I'll say it now. I do want to thank everybody for coming out and, and sharing your concerns and your feelings and your logic on this. I know it clearly doesn't feel like it, but it is considered and it is heard. I hope I don't butcher her name. I think it was Ms. Wallshotts. I wanted to directly acknowledge her concerns. She is right, they are valid, and they are heard. So I, I also hear some of these questions about people being in on it, whether it's commissioners or staff. I have no reason to think that's the case. It's, I hesitate even, like, bringing it up here and giving it any weight, but I have lost time, I've lost sleep, I lose time with my children to be here, and I take these decisions very seriously, and I think everyone up here does. We're all here to serve our community that we live in, that we pay taxes in, that we want to stay in for a very long time. I want to assure you that I am a deliberate decision maker. I want to get us to the right decision, even if it's not what I want personally. I promise you, I'll be, I take in new information and analyze the legal standards, because this is a legal decision to be made. So if anyone's confused, a little bit of a reminder where we are in the Gaslight Investors process, as has been discussed up here and in the crowd last meeting, we did talk about the standards of approval. But to echo one of the residents who was concerned about it being a done deal, it is not a done deal. As we all know, the devil is in the details on these, and we have pushed back on details. That was our last meeting, when we went through both of the draft agreements and pushed back on things like committing to closing the roads for public events. You'll notice in those agreements, we have requirements that full studies be done, and I know that there's a debate on when is the appropriate time. But I just want to acknowledge that those things that people are concerned about, we are carefully addressing, and it's in part because we identify them, and it's in part because you hold us accountable. You'll also notice that there is, in the red lines now, what we call like a ticking clock, which is to make sure that we, if this does go through, we don't find ourselves in a... in a situation 25 years from now where they still have this approved. We're negotiating with them right now what the time looks like on that, but it was suggested last, sorry, two weeks ago, last meeting, that it would be something like two years before they would, they would have to act on any approved plan within two years, otherwise it goes away. And I'm not saying everybody has to think those are the right outcomes, but just, I think it's important to acknowledge what, what is and isn't happening at this time. So in terms of future meetings, I think we are kind of expecting that the next meeting will have further discussion on those details as part of the draft, draft PUD ordinance, amendment, and resolution language. So, but we'll know more. So keep, keep an eye out for the agenda. The city posted on social media what will be on the agenda. And as people have noted, as we always know, you are always welcome to give comment here anytime, like you have tonight, on this issue. So that's, that's, that's it for me. Mr. Charles, do you have anything to add?
No. Thank you, Madam President. Just as you noted, we are anticipating Gaslight Investors to be back on the August 18th agenda. We have shared with the Gaslight Investors Group the requested changes to the current drafts. They, some of them are, they have issues with, some of them that they're considering, may propose alternate language that accomplishes the same thing. We'll see what they come back with. We do know that they're working on it. And Mr. Huff has been, had some preliminary conversations with their legal counsel on a couple of points. So we are working through that. Again, we're at this point anticipating August 18th, but as we continue to work this, our intent is by the time it's back on the agenda, things are in such a form that either city commission can provide direction on, yes, this, or provide, will provide to city commission, this is where they're at in these subject, different areas. I will note, it's their intention to be in attendance on the 18th. They will have representation here for that meeting to address any questions the commission may have. So with that said, just a couple of items. Just wanted to note that Jose Babushkas did receive a MEDC grant. We got a notice of that last week, and there's a public announcement. It's a $25,000 grant through the Michigan Main Street. I don't forget the, forget the exact grant. But we are eligible for it, or our businesses are, so they were successful in their application. As part of that process, that's actually something city commission authorized staff to submit those when they come in. So we did submit for that. For some interior renovations, a new glass sliding door, outdoor sale to, for the enhancer opens, or their outdoor space. So they are moving forward with that. And just one last comment about Manhattan Park. We've got a lot of tremendous positive feedback, a lot of great usage out of it. We are moving forward with acquiring for additional tables. We have them under the pavilion right now. We're seeing that with all the rentals and whatnot, we're going to like to place a couple of them outside the pavilion area just to provide some additional opportunity. So you'll, we should have those next week, and we'll deploy those and continue to observe the utilization there.
Great. Thank you so much.
Michigan Economic Development Corporation.
So next on the agenda, moving to the regular agenda items, is the Public Safety Quarterly Report by, with an introduction by Public Safety Director Bukama.
Good evening, Madam President and Commissioners. It is my honor and pleasure to present the second quarter report for 2025. Once again, Part One violent crime numbers remain extremely low, as well as property one, or, I'm sorry, Part One property crimes. Both are rare occurrences in the city of East Grand Rapids. But some of the decreases, however, you will notice some decrease in arrest numbers as those are somewhat together. With regards to traffic crashes, the second quarter numbers were lower in almost every traffic accident category. Accidents involving an injury were down from eight to one as compared to the second quarter of last year. As usual, as reported in previous quarters, FOIA reports and video redactions continue to see increases. However, staffing resources and the changes that we've made remain adequate, and mandated response times to the FOIAs are still being met. Fire and EMS numbers remain very consistent when compared to previous quarters and year-to-date numbers. We did have two internal affairs complaints in this past quarter. In both cases, after a thorough investigation, officers were exonerated in both incidents. They were, when we do those investigations, we review the fleet cam, the body cam, as well as interviews. And after both of those investigations, it was, in both cases, it was more of a, the complaints were disputing the tickets and not the officer's conduct. So the officers were exonerated in those cases. And then at the end, as usual, traffic crash and traffic stop demographic data is included for your review. And if you have any questions about any portions of the report, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Just one question. I've noticed that under, what is it? It's actually in the, what, the very first chart page, under minor miscellaneous, under Part Two crimes. Yes, I saw it jump up in the second quarter, you know, substantially from the years past. Is that, what are the minor miscellaneous? Can you give me a couple of examples of what that is? I'm just wondering what, you know, what changed or...
Yeah, that's, so that incorporates a lot of, a lot of different offenses. It's kind of like a big conglomeration. Some of them are like animal violations, trespassing complaints, obstructing justice, open doors. It's kind of a big lump category that typically we don't get enough of to individualize. So we do see some changes in those depending on the time of year and so forth, so.
Got you. Thanks. I just didn't know, maybe you changed categories or, I assume that is a one big kind of...
Yeah, it's kind of lumped in. There's a bunch of categories.
Catch-all. And then I also just, I noticed that where, it's kind of unfortunate, I know it's not a huge number, but it did jump up, that suicide, that suicide number, I forgot what page we're on, but where it jumped up, and now we had like a suicide attempts.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. So suicide attempts, we are going to reclassify that. They're not all suicide attempts. They may have, we may get called to a, that's how we're dispatched to a suicide attempt. It may be just thoughts or some ideations of some sort, or somebody just in a mental health crisis. So we are looking at next report trying to specify what those actually are, because that is somewhat misrepresented based on the name of that category.
Got you. Thanks. I just wondered if, do we have some program that we help them then with mental health?
Yeah, we do. Yes, we do. So each call is treated, you know, differently with the CIT program, mental health crisis, or if there's an actual medical emergency. So we're going to try to differentiate that a little bit going forward.
Got you. Thanks. I just got sad when I saw it. I was like, oh.
Yeah. That kind of led us, when we saw that number as well, trying to let us create a more accurate category there.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Just real quickly, this is my quarterly ask if you guys are staffed appropriately, especially when it comes to, when I see video, audio, photo records requests. I know in the past you've talked about more gun permits coming through your guys' office, and I know we've dealt with that. I believe we dealt with that recently, where you, you put, brought someone in...
Yes.
...full-time. Is that kind of stabilized now? Does that feel like you guys are appropriately staffed in the front?
Yes, 100%. They're, like I noted earlier, our timelines are being met, especially with regards to FOIAs, which include video redactions. Our staff, Caroline Ford and Emily Semko, do just a phenomenal job. And, yeah, we're, we're staffed properly at the moment. Thank goodness to them. All thanks goes to them. They're hard workers and do a great job with it.
Don't they ever, and this is more of a comment, but between your bike police and the cops on the beat and in the cars, I just want to comment on how friendly and inviting your East Grand Rapids police are as a whole. I feel like for a lot of residents and a lot of people visiting, that's their only interaction with the city for the most part. And from every interaction I've had, from walking my dog past or my kid rides by on a bike, you guys always handle it with such a positive, friendly, inviting attitude. And I just wanted to comment on, on how nice it is to have. I really appreciate it.
I appreciate that. That is definitely great news, and that's what we strive to do. I appreciate that. Any other questions?
So I know for the second quarter, there were 241 traffic stops and 75 citations. So it looks like roughly a third of traffic stops are resulting in citations. How do our officers determine whether or not to issue a citation as a result of a traffic stop?
Well, with regards to the statistic you quoted, that, that's partially true. With an accident, there may be a citation or two issued. It wouldn't be the result of a traffic stop. So in those cases, we have a, kind of a standard procedure, should normally rate the at-vault driver if it's, if it's clear. But to answer your question, how do we determine? There's a lot of different factors that go into it, like with a speeding complaint or a speeding traffic stop. If somebody is going 10 over and through your interaction, you may feel like a verbal warning's most appropriate. That's going to stop the, the speeding from occurring. That's the ultimate goal. So that's partially a judgment call based on the officer. The same can be said with other moving violations, like failing to yield or not stopping completely at a stop sign. It's, you want to give the lowest amount of reprimand possible, but some cases, a citation is required or the officer feels required.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is to consider introduction of an amendment...
Sorry. Are we taking public comment on this and/or having then discussion before we move on?
Well, there's, I would like to, I can open it to public comment for sure.
Are we doing public comment on this agenda item right now?
Yes.
Again, my name is Judith Baxter. I live on Hall Street, and I'm just here at this public comment to commend our East Grand Rapids Department of Public Safety. They do a fantastic job. If they have 250 traffic stops and they issue 75 tickets, that means that officers are in tune with the community, they're working with the community, and they're demonstrating the character of the community. Because issuing tickets isn't always law enforcement. It's working with the community, talking to the citizens, and coming up with a resolution of diverse positions. We are very, very lucky to have a police department like the East Grand Rapids Department of Public Safety led by Chief Bukama in our community. It leads to our community being safe, allowing us to do what we want to do in freedom and comfort and security. Sometimes leave your door unlocked, sometimes leave your car unlocked, although I don't recommend it, and I don't think the chief does either. But it, it makes our community what it is, and we owe a lot of that, most of that, to our Department of Public Safety. And I just want to stand up here and give my kudos to the East Grand Rapids Department of Public Safety.
Thank you for that. Would anybody else like to speak? Sorry, this isn't my normal role, so I jumped a little ahead. So I think we don't, do we normally have a discussion on this? Should we open up the discussion?
Yes, there was no action. Typically, when we do public comment, then there's subsequent action, but president's preference.
All right. Let's discuss.
Yes. I don't think it's a surprise what I would like to highlight and discuss. Because predictably, once again, we are seeing racial inequity in our traffic stop activity. And this is a, this is one of those situations where we can hold two truths, that everything that's been said in this room about our public safety department being wonderful and keeping our, our community safe, absolutely agree with and commend, as I have previously. And it's not okay, like, I'm, it really gets my blood pumping to see this data quarter after quarter telling us there's more analysis we need to do, and there's an underlying issue or issues here that we need to explore. I, you know, there's a couple of comparison points that, that we look at in there. I understand that comparing outcomes of our traffic stops in terms of, as a comparison to our demographic population may not be appropriate, and thus included in there as a comparison to traffic stops. We still see nearly double the amount of black folks being pulled over in traffic stops as we see in random traffic crashes. Now, this is not to make any accusations in an open meeting today. This is to reiterate what I've been saying now for several years, which is, there's a lot more questions we need to ask of this data. I asked last time, when we looked at the quarterly report, city manager Charles, are we at a point where we can move forward? Because it's been in our, it's been in our strategic plan now for the last two cycles that we are going to move forward with this data analysis. Are we at a point now where we can move forward with this data analysis to start exploring and asking more and better questions of this data to figure out what some of these root causes might be?
At this point, as I noted in the last conversation, now that Director Bukama's leadership team has said, that was kind of our, okay, now we've got that said and whatnot, have we done any additional work on that at this point? The answer is no. We've had a number of issues before us, and we're trying to prioritize. We're in the middle of actually onboarding four, four new recruits, two, two, two officers transferred, one who's transferred, one has transferred, and potentially we've made an offer to another officer. So it's, you know, as you can imagine, with the smaller organization, our capacity at times gets, and our focus has been getting our recruits online, getting them off to the academy and whatnot, hoping within the next month or so, we'll be able to kind of take a pause and go, okay, now what are, what are our next conversations? As I think through what's coming up on kind of different items that the department's going to take a look at and whatnot. So I'm probably, probably a month out before the director and I have a deeper conversation in regards to how do we look at this and whatnot, and then also have a conversation with the commission is, in seeking direction from the commission of what do you want us to look at and whatnot. And I'm hoping foreseeable future, what that means exactly. I don't have an answer this evening.
So I hear you, and I've also heard this be the reason, I think, for the last several times that we've looked at this quarterly report. You know, and we've talked before, and there's been, there's been further support than beyond just me on this commission before in a discussion of looking to, because a lot of the work that needs to be done right now is going to be, from my understanding, taking a look at the various data systems that we have that aren't talking to each other, that we need to make talk to each other so that we can better slice and dice and ask, like I said, ask questions of this data. That it seems reasonable to me that we could say within the next month, or two months, or three months, that we will at least have a plan drafted, you know, that we could say, this is how we're going to approach this. We've talked before about potentially kicking it to a graduate school. People are looking for projects for, you know, dissertations or pulling in a data intern, or lots of, things have kind of popped up. But it would really push, and I would love for my fellow commissioners to, to help in that push as well, to say like, let's at least get the skeleton of a plan by the time we take another look at, at this quarterly report.
I see no harm in setting up an outline for what expected information we'd hope to glean from such, such an analysis. For instance, do we have a baseline data on, instead of stops and crashes, just numbers of drivers belonging to each of the categories of race? Right? So, I mean, I think that would help illuminate some of the, some of the information here in, in terms of, you know, finding out if there are inequities amongst, you know, just, just a table like this. So I'd be all about additional data and additional analyses.
I mean, I am for understanding more about this. I also am willing to say when I, I don't know what I don't know. And so I don't know if, you know, statistician would look at this and say, given the low numbers that you have, we need one more year, two more years of data. But I'm willing to ask that question of someone who knows more than I do to say what's appropriate and when.
Really, to me? Okay, so I, I think, I mean, more data always, the more data, the better. I think I gotta, you can speak and think about, you know, how much would that we be taxing our, our, our public safety officials from having to input that data if it's a way, if there's a way... from having to input that data if it's a way if there's a way to capture that data pretty easily? And then I guess we have to articulate what data are we specifically looking for. I some of the other like kind of markers that I look for is to go, how many complaints do we get within a year or a quarter for our officers if they're acting unbecoming? Or if they feel someone's feeling that there's a racial issue that that's there? I think in the past, my past four years, I've never I don't think we had any that I can recall. So I look at that as a baseline to consider as well to go, is there? But I'm also wondering, you know, again, I'm not a I'm not that smart when it comes to all these numbers, but I also quite wonder like, you know, I think there's not I'm not sure there's correlation between crashes and traffic stops. You know, crashes could be in a tree. I don't know how they lump these in. So I guess I guess I need more information about already the data that we have. What are we what are we actually looking at? And what are we trying to what are we trying to look for? So another piece of information I'd love to know, which again, I don't want to be too taxing, but to go, you know, if we're looking at I look at the roads as like an open like open C U A or open fairway. So we have not just our own residents that are on these roads or people that are traversing through, coming in, and you know, whether they're stopping in to patronize one of our awesome restaurants or or commercial retail stores, or if they're visiting friend or they're just passing through, like this is good data to kind of understand. You know, for the people who are pulling over, how many of them are residents, how many are not, who's who's here, who's living? Just to get a full ballpark of of the idea of what we're seeing. So I think that some things are not captured here, some things I'm not quite sure if we can capture and how we do that. I've done a number of ride-alongs as well, and I think that's important that everybody that has a chance to do that. As a commissioner, it's like, I thought it was the coolest thing, one of my childhood dreams is to be able to go on these ride-alongs. And you know, but then you you start to realize, okay, yeah, you can't, I mean, start asking yourself, when can you detect the race of somebody as they're being someone's being pulled over? They're making a decision generally to pull somebody over for a reason before they know before they know the race or the age or anything, you know, it's hard to tell. And I was even I couldn't do it either. So I so there's some things I think those are really helpful to see, which I don't know if you can quantify that or how you could. But I think that we are on the right track just in general. I'd like to make sure that we I also echo what Commissioner Burdick said to Director Bukama. I think you guys are doing one heck of a great job. And again, I also baseline on, you know, what kind of complaints are coming through. Keeping people safe is great, but going back to the question at hand, we'd love more information, of course. I don't want to tax our team so much, and I also want to make sure that we prioritize what we're what we're looking for instead of like digging in for something that might not be a problem, you know, and and spinning a wheel there. And we have a lot of other things that we have to be that should be take priority. If it was the other way around, and we're getting a number of complaints, and there's some issues that are happening, that'd be like, we need to discover what these problems are. And and that's where that data really would be helpful. So again, I think the data is helpful to have to have, but I don't know if there's a huge like, you know, it needs to be done today kind of thing.
To be clear, to respond to a few of those things, Commissioner Wesley. And I believe I've been clear on all of these things in past conversations, but to re-clarify, I'm not talking about gathering additional data. Now, there is discussion around, sure, we could it would take a lot of effort and probably a lot of money to stand out on the street corner and count drivers, right? Which could be done. But that's not what I'm talking about right now. Also, completely understand, and as does Chief Bukama and predecessors, that the road user population may absolutely be different from the population of residents who live in the city. That's what the traffic crash data is meant to be as a stand-in for. Because we're thinking, oh, okay, we're not standing on the corner counting road users. But traffic crashes are kind of a random occurrence that should be fairly representative of the population of road users, right? Which is why a comparison, it's not perfect, but none of these measures is going to be perfect. And when I talk about going back to not getting additional data, as I've discussed with our staff before, there are a number of different data collection systems that are used in the Department of Public Safety. And with data systems, they don't all integrate and align and talk to each other. And so we can't right now answer more complex questions like, well, how are the cite like, who is getting the citations and for what? And what is the race of the people getting cited? Like, we can't break it down like that. And so that's not necessarily a skill or a task that we would be having our public safety officers do. That is someone that we'd need to bring in, again, like someone who is experienced at big data sets and things like that. So it would not tax our public safety department. And again, to just be clear, I'm not suggesting, and I've done ride-alongs as well, and I'm not suggesting that officers are making race-based decisions about who to pull over. What we see in the data is that there is an inequity in the outcomes. And I think that based on things that we hear from friends, from residents, from neighbors, our community, we and our community are concerned about this trend, and it's been in the ether for a very long time. We have data that suggests there may be something behind it, and I think that we've got a real duty to take a look at this and say, let's dig into this deeper. Let's use all of the data that we have at our disposal. Let's use all of our thinking that we have at our disposal to explore this, right? So maybe in what we're talking about, and I hear Commissioner Schwartz you saying, you know, I'm not I need more information, and we all need more information, right? Potentially, this sounds then like we need to have a work session about this, or we need to have an agenda item to have a discussion about this before we get to a plan. Either way, whatever the next steps are, I would love for us to put a deadline or a timeline on next steps. Because again, I come back to this is in our strategic plan, and we have said that we're committed to this for the last two years, and we have not done anything in the last two years on this, moving this forward in terms of the data analysis.
So I think it sounds like our next steps would be in the next couple of months when there is capacity as some shift changing roles shift around and public safety can has the time because we need them to do their primary functions first. City manager will sit down with the chief, and they will discuss this and come up with some discussion points perhaps for the rest of us. Is that a good way to go forward?
Yeah, let me let me noodle on kind of this because part of what I'm hearing is also when we establish this program or establish that we were going to collect this data, and even how we've collected has evolved over the years in regards to lessons learned of things of that nature. We've experimented with a couple other potential systems that just didn't align or wasn't didn't meet the what we're trying to the information we're trying to collect. Anyway, with that said, I think kind of a starting point will be the conversation regarding that we had with the commission at the time was here are, you know, here's our approach. This is why we're doing this. This is why we separate the data. But then also the further discussions in regards to some of the challenges because the amount of information we're talking about is relatively low. And one of the cautions that were provided by individuals who do this work was I think, and I'll have to go back and Director Bukama, I'll have to go back and dig this up because I don't have this off the top of my head. But the number of stops before you can even do a statistically valid analysis is such that we are well below those numbers. And then I think was has been acknowledged and discussed this evening is understanding what is our travel population? And while we utilize crash data, which is the only mechanism that we have at this time outside of, as Commissioner noted, doing a full survey where you do set people on the corner and people, basically, I think it was a committee of three or a group of three. Everybody looks and who's coming down the road and say, you know, makes it tries to make a determine on determination on race to provide that data on the traveling information. All that said, I think it's reasonable within the next 60 or 90 days for us to be able to at least come up with a potential kind of discussion on or at least how to continue the conversation and whatnot. Because it is it is something that, again, it's not deliberate on our part to ignore it. It's just how much capacity we have as an organization and has, and as we've reported over the years, we've had a lot of turnover in the in the department. And it's typical, we're just in one of those cycles right now with retirements and whatnot that. Getting back up to some sort of full staffing, we're closer than we have been for a while, but it's still going to be months before our recruits are through the academies and on the road and blah, blah, blah. So all that said, I will touch base with the director here shortly and go from there.
Okay. Before we move on, I just want to make sure no further discussion down there? Everybody good? All right. Moving on to item eight on the agenda, consider an introduction of an amendment to the city's purchasing ordinance with introduction by City Manager Charles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We actually have two items related to purchasing this evening. The first is recommendation that we increase the amount that City Manager is authorized to for purchasing without City Commission approval is the going from 5,000 to 10,000. John, I think we set that amount a number of years ago. Just with the increase of costs and stuff, our threshold of what we have to bring to commission is some things. And I know the commission has noted in the past when we've had kind of that 5,001 item, is there a way to do this? So this is the start of that process. So we're asking for introduction with this.
Are there any questions for Mr. Charles?
We're talking right now about the amendment?
Yes.
On the amendment draft?
The policy will be the next one.
Okay. I have a question on the very first section, section 1.211. Where it says the purchasing agent may solicit bids verbally or by telephone or may contact prospective bidders by written communication. Is written communication inclusive of email and electronic communication, or does that need to be more explicit?
We typically will utilize email or just kind of the way it works.
I've typically seen in other policies that electronic communication these days is called out specifically, but.
I mean, we could add that, but I do think it's the written communication is broad enough to pick the emails up.
Great. Okay. I do have a couple, well, one other thing, but I'll defer. Okay, I notice in section 1.212 sub B and sub G, we have some specifically gendered pronouns in there. And I'm hopeful that as we continue to go through and revise policies, that we can move to gender-neutral pronouns and or just restating a person's specific role to avoid the use of pronouns and be as inclusive as possible.
I would I would support and want to see that further as well. I didn't I didn't see that upon my first reading of the document.
Thank you. I think you helped me to know for that.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, what section did you see specifically?
Sub B, it says the second line right at the end, to him or her. And then in sub G, it specifically talks about him, uses male pronouns, him and his.
Okay. So section G, okay.
It's right here.
The attorneys are?
The red pen.
Yeah. Commission is a minimal, we will we can still proceed with an introduction with those noted changes. Because it does not alter the kind of the core request to modify the purchase limit.
Are there any other comments or questions on this draft?
Comments, I'm supportive of increasing the amount. It's sometimes a little silly, the things that we have to give you approval to do.
My only comment would be as well, for people listening and people out there, for a transparency point and from a check and balance point, this is all reviewed through the Finance Committee every two weeks. So we see all the outlays. So it's not like just because now that's something that's $9,999 doesn't have to be approved by us as a whole, it isn't looked at by the Finance Committee because it still is and approved and signed off on every two weeks.
Great point, Commissioner Burdick. Commissioner Schwartz, Burdick and I are on the Finance Committee. And I think it was eye-opening to me when I first joined the committee to see the robust conversation around expenses. This just allows Manager Charles to not have to request things below a certain amount. And yes, there's been ones that we I thought, you know, within that range that just didn't didn't need to go in front of a formal request process. So I'm in favor of adjusting that.
Here, here. Would anybody like to make a motion to introduce this amendment with the edits that were suggested?
So moved with the gender-neutral amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Public comment?
Public comment. Anybody here to speak to this?
I'm just curious, how much are we like, how often does this happen? It's not clear in here. Like, are we talking about millions of dollars that fall in that threshold? Are we talking about, you know, once a week or is there any?
Should I?
So so the so within the case commissioners have other half of this question. This amount this doesn't happen that often, but it does just enough to warrant the change. It's something that's been we've been looking at for a while, but it's not huge amounts of money. As Commissioner Burdick noted, all of our bills, all of our checks that we cut are always in our commission packets as part of the approval process. So our residents can see specifically, or any interest parties can see specifically various expenses, how much, things of that nature, so.
Well, just to comment on that more, you could go back and look, if someone wanted to figure out how many times this comes up, all of our old agendas, there'll be the approval for something for something amount of money. I don't know how many that is, and I don't know if there's an easy way to scrub the agendas to like see how many are in there. But if you wanted to get like an idea if I was going to be advising someone to do that, that's the way I'd say they could do that to figure that out.
I think examples would be like approving the purchase of three laptops for use by the assessing department in the amount of $6,200. And then we have to sit here, and Charlotte gets to present to us all the diligence that went into selecting certain laptops. And while we appreciate her time going into that, it's not necessarily the something that we all felt needed to be rehashed here. Yeah.
As a new resident, I'm so heartened to hear about racial and equity issues that are being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready for a wait, did we get a motion and a second?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right, we're ready for a vote on this. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consider approving the revised purchasing policy. And that is with an introduction by City Manager Charles.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, I do need to clarify, I was asked this question earlier in regards to are we revising? And actually, this is establishing a unified purchasing policy. We've had over the years a number of just one-offs of how do we purchase, say automobiles, or how do we purchase this, things of that nature. As the commission, I think, is aware over the last few couple of years now, and I'm pleased to report, I think we're actually done. I think this is the last one for City Commission to consider. We've been updating all of our various policies and whatnot. Our former city clerk, Karen Brower, has been working behind the scenes to consolidate. I can share that when I started, there were three separate policy books in my office and went, okay. And of course, so we went through, updated everything and whatnot. We have not had a centralized purchasing policy like this before. Like I said, we've had the ordinance, which is always our go-to document, but felt it was appropriate for us. So let's get everything into one place, makes it easier for the staff and our team to go, okay, how do we handle this situation, things of that nature? To that end, the draft is based on best practices from the Government Finance Officers Association. We obviously would have took a look at other communities, things of that nature. Ms. Seeth is, obviously, has been looking at this and drafting and putting as far as the entire team. We did incorporate a section in regards to green purchasing. Spent a lot of time going through of how do we go at this in acknowledgement that we are a smaller organization. We chatted with some of our other communities within the area who have much larger staffs, and they have far more comprehensive, robust policies. But they also have whole dedicated teams just for that matter. So we took the approach on this recommended draft to want to continue the city's further the city's goal of being carbon neutral for city. the city's goal of, um, being carbon neutral for city operations by 2040. But also be able to, um, continue to, um, um, get, um, you know, get projects through and whatnot. So we're, we're seeking that balance. Um, I think City Commission has noted that when we have purchases, whether it be vehicles, things of that nature, we are, um, very clear in regards to did we look at these issues and how did we, um, potentially, um, be able to assure that we are moving forward with the carbon neutrality goal. So with that, I'm open to answering any questions. Again, the basis for this is the underlying purchasing ordinance, um, and we are just, um, looking to put it all in one single policy, so with that.
So do we still have to do a final reading of the ordinance update?
That, yes, that'll be at the next Commission meeting.
And I'm just wondering procedurally if we need to postpone this vote so that the set amount doesn't get ahead of, we, we're not getting ahead of ourselves in terms of setting a policy before we've actually revised an ordinance?
Um, it's Commission's preference. Um, I will tell you from the staff's perspective, we understand the threshold is still at 5,000, but just wanted to get the two of them in conjecture, um, in conjunction. I did want to introduce the ordinance and then have, you know, a potential question of where are we with the policy? So we're, that was the thinking of why these two agenda items were on there. Again, um, at this point, we don't anticipate any over $5,000 requests being, um, on the upcoming agenda, so, um, so we're comfortable with that. But again, I will defer to Commission on that.
So I guess on that topic, I hear that, and, you know, I, again, procedurally would be more comfortable waiting until we have amended the ordinance, because the ordinance leads the policy should follow. But I'm also not going to make a motion if there's no second or...
Well, I wonder if we could, um, motion to approve subject to final, approval of the final reading? That way we can, you know, handle it tonight, since we're anticipating a fuller agenda at our next meeting.
If we can do that.
I'm, I'm getting a nod.
Yeah, I think you can.
Okay.
I'm, I concur. Good catch, Commissioner, Commissioner Blasey.
Did you call me Senator?
Uh, no.
I heard Commissioner.
Heard you say something else. Heard you say something else first, and I started to laugh, sorry.
Good call. Good catch.
Okay, then I do have some other questions, and we'll have to, I guess, amend the, when we make the motion, we'll have to put that in. So I, I appreciate the inclusion of the green policy. Certainly, we've been talking about this for quite a while, um, helping to ensure that our purchasing policy is, is aligned with particularly the Climate Action Plan. Um, I, would, there's a, and there's a few pieces here, and it might help if I send details later, but talk about kind of the overarching plot here is that, um, I would like to see us add some language in here that, that's a little bit broader, that says that purchasing activities, RFPs, bid criteria and so forth, also need to align with stated goals and objectives of the city or the City Commission, et cetera, so that we can ensure that we're making decisions that are aligned, not just with the Climate Action Plan, which we've had a lot of discussion about, but potentially say like the Bike and Mobility Action Plan, or strategic goals or something like that. So that we are like driving, we are making decisions about how we spend our money aligned with what we say our priorities are.
I like that, and I'm trying to think of how to do that in a way that is, I don't want to say practical, but like, at every decision, like, well, maybe we should have a list of what that is, you know, like really define those metrics so that staff isn't trying to look through every time we've stated this is our goal. You know what I'm trying to say? Like, I don't want to make this like every purchasing decision a challenge to, to think about and go through everything. So how do we do that?
Yeah, I mean, I, in, off the cuff, it seems like it might be a separate conversation for us to say, listen, these are really the guiding documents or the guiding goals of our city, so that essentially there's a checklist whenever anything like this comes up, so that staff can say, listen, do we need to, is this applicable here, is this applicable here or not?
Yeah.
Um, but we also want to leave the policy flexible, because those documents necessarily may change. Like I said, I've identified like some pieces throughout here where we could do that, but it's kind of, I don't know if we want to go through all. I don't know if that would be helpful for me to talk about that or not.
Well, um, Commissioner, if you have, uh, specific...
Example?
Examples that you'd like to, uh, share with myself, and I and the team can kind of take a look at this and, and, um, work on, is there a way to incorporate those things, um, or, you know, in a way that makes sense to, President Schwartz's comments, I think everybody acknowledges that we want to be able to continue to still be flexible and nimble and, um, and not get...
And be easily implemented.
Yeah, yeah. So with that said, um, if you'd like to, uh, forward me kind of what you have, and that's something that we can take a look at and say, yeah, we think we're comfortable with that, or we have concerns if we do this is a potential, an outcome that may not have been the intention to, um, to, um, to do that, so.
Yep.
Are there any other comments? Other Commissioners' questions? Would anybody, um, in the audience tonight like to speak to this item? All right. So, okay. Um, at this point, then, there's really no motion to introduce. You'll be forwarding comments to, um, City Manager, and, um, potentially this could appear on the next agenda item, or we can always get to this after the second, after the final reading as we work through it.
Yep.
So, all right. Moving on to agenda, agenda item number 10, consider a one-year pool use agreement with Aquinas College for scheduled use of the community pool, and that will be an introduction, again, by City Manager Charles.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Melville is actually in the midst of our middle school, uh, football draft, setting up teams for that, so that's why he's not here this evening. Um, so we have reached agreement with Aquinas to continue their use of the community pool. Um, we are increasing the overall rate by 10% to 27,500. Mr. Melville details in the, um, in his memo, the approach that we're taking, things of that nature. We are pleased to share that, um, as part of this discussion, that Aquinas has committed to, um, seven dates of use for their indoor turf facility. Um, this will help when, um, the school district is updating or putting down the new turf at Manny Field. So we've been, they've been working behind the scenes diligently to try to, um, try to avoid as much disruption of our programs as possible during that turf replacement. So, um, we were able to weave that in, um, to these negotiations and whatnot. I will expand, and the question came up during Finance Committee in regards to just partnerships in general. Uh, we are, um, continue to, you know, the schools have kind of point on this at this point, is the look at their upcoming renovations. We are reaching out to, um, looking for potential solutions to address when the high school goes through its renovation and fields are offline, stuff like that, how are we going to handle that? And we are in conversations not only with Aquinas, but Calvin and other, uh, potential, uh, partners in the area to, um, assure that our, we can provide the programming between the schools and the recreation program that we normally do. So those are ongoing efforts, but this is the kind of first, first one that we've been able to get across the finish line if you, so to speak. So we are asking for approval of a one-year pool use agreement, as specified.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Commissioners? All right. Is anybody here to speak, from the public, to speak to this agenda item? All right. Um, I will ask for a motion then.
I move that the City Commission approve a one-year pool use agreement with Aquinas College for scheduled use of the community pool for a cost of $27,500 with a proposed 50-50 revenue split with EGRPS as outlined in the memo below.
Second.
All right. Um, I'll just say thank you to city staff and public schools for negotiating this. I think it's a big win to have those hours, um, at the field house. So thank you to everyone involved in that. Um, does anybody else have any other comments?
I'd say I agree. I mean, I remember we, we did this with Aquinas before, and I know that we were some concerned about, you know, if they're going to eat into the time of our, our own students, or even, um, you know, our own swim programs that we have. And I thought it was eloquently written where it gave us a lot more power within the contract that saying, hey, we, we get first, uh, priority, and then they're able to work around us. It's a, it's a great, it's a great, I think it's a great example of how the city works hand in hand with, with the schools, and we found another way of bringing more revenues, another revenue stream to help, you know, offset the costs of, of maintaining that pool. And I think that's, uh, because before, I remember in the past, before that, we were concerned about, you know, how do we, it's expensive and how we maintain that, and also with lifeguards and such, so. So I, I appreciate them wanting to come back, and I, it's great to see that they continue joining using the pool. It's great.
Thank you. If nobody else has anything else to add, we'll bring it to a vote. All those in favor, please, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda items. Can I please have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Cut me on my toes there. Okay, what, what are the agenda items?